Can we have Shannon here with us? I know, is she here in the City Hall? Can you call her here, please? Thank you. I just feel like this is important. I see that. I'd still like her to join us, though. He was sick with a flu. All right, guys. Guys, nothing from the audience, please, let's. I can hear everything you say, you look good today. Vince?
No comment. I was bad, sir.
You all right?
Oh, yeah.
Not too bad.
Yeah.
I'm in this guy's, so. This even runs, but I think he got a good final. Was Joffrey along, by the way? Yeah, you can unmute it, I saw Esther show up to the meeting.
Yeah, no. They say, you know.
We tried to try to do what's beautiful and we were. You want to unmute her? Those at home that are watching. Thank you, Shannon. I appreciate you, I think this is just an important meeting, I think we should have everybody present, especially if you're here. Thank you. Um, you, call me into the Zoom, then can you go ahead and begin? I'm Alan C. Young, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. All right, well, good evening, everyone, good evening, Councilman, Council Chair Badun, thank you, other members. Pleasure to be here, um, to discuss the highlights of the recently issued audit. Um, it was issued about six weeks ago, early February. Um, as you're well aware, there was an extension that was granted, we had some extenuating circumstances, the OPEB valuation. There were some issues getting that, um, so that is the only, I want to make very clear, that is the only piece that created the delay. Everything else was completed, ready to go, but that OPEB valuation that comes from the actuary, um, without that, things just couldn't be completed, so that's why it was issued in February, but again, there was an extension granted by the state, so it was not considered to be a late filing. So I do have a handout that I've given all of you just to discuss the audit in looking at a highlight form. Um, page three, just always like to start with a reminder of the responsibilities for the financial statements. Um, the responsibility of the preparation and fair presentation of the statements lies with management of the city. Our responsibility as auditor is strictly to give our opinion on those statements. So although we do assist with some of the legwork of putting the information in the form of statements, it is all based on management's representation. So literally, out of the nearly hundred-page full audit report, the only two or three pages that really relate solely to us as auditor is the independent auditor's report. On page four, we did issue an unmodified opinion. Um, it is what we have been able to do each and every year, but that is the gold standard of opinions. It means, once we completed our procedures, in our opinion, the information in the statements and the disclosures is fairly stated. Um, now that, as I've said, that's what we've been able to issue every year. Um, it is fairly uncommon for anything else to be issued, but not out of the question. Um, don't know if I mentioned this in the past, but we had a new client in our office about three years ago. Their accounting function was in such shambles, we had to issue what's known as a disclaimer of opinion. Um, means we couldn't tell if the numbers were good, bad, or in between. So that report had virtually no value to it. So it just shows what can happen in a worst-case scenario when the accounting function isn't working the way it should be. Page five, uh, just a very important concept, and that's the concept of reasonable assurance, under which under which this and all audits are conducted. What that means is, we do not look at every single transaction. Obviously, that would be time and cost prohibitive, just not the way things are done, but because of that, there lies a risk that there may be misstatements that were not identified by us. We certainly do not feel there are any, and our procedures are designed to help us identify any such misstatements, but because of the concept of reasonable assurance, um, I cannot tell you that with one hundred percent certainty. Page six, just some required communications to those of you charged with governance. Um, scope of our audit was as described in our engagement letter, nothing above and beyond we were asked or required to do. Um, we received complete cooperation through the process. Um, certainly want to thank Shannon, um, Michelle from the plant Moran team, everybody at the city. Excellent cooperation and assistance. Anything that we needed, uh, we asked for, we got kindly. So full cooperation throughout the process. Um, any adjustments identified as part of the audit were recorded and have been incorporated in the year-end numbers. Um, your accounting policies were consistently applied. We had no disagreements with management on accounting matters. And also, to the best of our knowledge, management did not have to consult with any third parties because of any potential, potential disagreements. Page seven, we get some numbers for your general fund. Uh, we've got comparative information here. Uh, as you see, the assets were down slightly, they were forty-four point four million dollars at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, uh, down to forty-two point seven million dollars, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, we'll look at some pie charts, breaking that out a bit, yes.
Do you mind just, every time you go over something like asset, like explain exactly what does it include? Liabilities exactly, so that people can know what we're talking about.
Sure, and, and actually, I mean, next two pages, we've got some pie charts that will break that out in, in detail, that'll probably work to facilitate that, absolutely, thank you. Liabilities, uh, did go up from twenty point nine million dollars to twenty-six point four million dollars. Um, again, we'll look at a pie chart that'll show the composition of that.
I, I got a quick question.
Absolutely.
And I know we're gonna go through this in the pie chart. You may, we made about a little bit over, a little bit less than two point two million dollars from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Well, we have an increase of almost five point two million dollars?
Yes.
So we make less money and spend more money?
This is on the balance sheet, so this isn't revenues and expenses, this is assets liabilities. So there's a correlation, but the, the tricky thing with assets and liabilities, it is one point in time. So something, um, for example, on the liabilities, uh, the main reason the liabilities went up is there was just a delay in the prior year property tax payment to, um, your TIFFA fund. So because of that, it just increased those liabilities, because at that exact day, that payment had not been made yet.
Okay, thank you.
Um, your fund balance, um, seventeen point eight million dollars in twenty twenty-three, that did drop down to twelve point eight million dollars, twenty twenty-four. So that will be reflected with your revenues and expenses, um, that the expenses did exceed the revenues for the year. Now, if we want to go to page eight, this will be the pie chart for your assets. Um, in both of the years, you'll see far and away the biggest piece of the pie is your cash and cash equivalents, so you do have a very liquid asset base, um, you got twenty-seven point six million dollars in cash at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, made up just under two-thirds of those total assets. Additionally, you've got receivables of three million forty-two thousand dollars. Um, you've got due from the pension fund, three point nine million dollars. Um, due from other funds of three point nine million dollars. Uh, those due from other funds, that's just kind of timing issues. The general fund, uh, pays certain expenses upfront, then gets reimbursed by the other funds, such as the water and sewer fund. So again, it's just a timing issue, those payments all come in, um, just a, just a lag in that timing, so that is shown as, as an asset.
What does the receivables include, consists of, receivables?
The receivables itself would include just a variety of receivables from the state, receivables on various grants, just kind of an all-encompassing receivables coming in. So revenues that have been earned as of year end, but the payment comes in subsequently.
And what's the one, uh, do, do from other funds?
The do from other funds is, a lot of that is payroll and other costs that the general fund pays upfront for other funds, so as I said, for example, the water and sewer fund, uh, public service fund, so just costs that the general fund pays initially, then subsequently gets reimbursed by those other funds. So that money would have came in in the subsequent month or some point thereafter. So just a timing. So for the city as a whole, it's really not a liability, it's just looking at the fund level itself. Your general fund, you know, has that as a receivable, there would be a corresponding payable in one of the other funds, so in fact, in the, the report itself, there are some large line items for due to other funds, due from other funds, and there's a footnote that shows all of that, that amount of detail, but if you look at the entity as a whole, it's just internal balances is what that represents. If we want to go to page nine, take a look at the liabilities. Again, we've got one piece of the pie that is, um, the most significant liability on a dollar basis, that has stayed pretty consistent between the two years, um, fourteen point three million dollars versus fourteen point two million dollars. Um, because of the fact, liabilities went up in total, that percentage is slightly less, um, but that's your unearned revenue. What that represents is those are the, the ARPA funds that you'd received that had not been used as of June thirtieth. Now, it's my understanding there has been kind of some, some decisions made on how that's going to be utilized and plans in place with that, but that's what that big unearned revenue piece is, dollars you've received, it just had not been utilized as of year end.
A question about this money. It says decisions were made to how it's going to be used. We were only given one option, I think.
Okay, that, that's outside of my, my venue, I, again, I just, maybe decision isn't the right word, I know there is, um, allocation. An allocation in place, absolutely. How that was determined is, is kind of beyond my, my scope. Just wanted to indicate that it seems that that liability will be decreasing at some point in the near future because of that designation.
And I have a question. You had a lot to do with this yourself, correct?
Lot to do with what?
The audit, the audit.
Yes, I oversaw the audit, correct?
You oversaw, and, okay, I'll, let's finish.
Okay. Then again, we got another piece of five point eight million dollars due to component unit. That is a little unusually large, because that really represents two years of tax captures for your component unit versus the year before, which was two point six million dollars, that's the more typical amount. Got one year, but for whatever reasoning, um, one year's allocation just was not forwarded to the component unit. So this five point eight million dollars is essentially two years worth of capture.
What exactly is the component unit?
The component unit is the TIFFA?
TIFFA?
Yes, yes. So there, there's tax dollars that are captured that relate to them. Um, city's holding on to those, there's a transfer that's made at some point, there was just a little delay in that happening for whatever reasons.
That's almost double. Council chair. Yep, councilman. Yeah, so in other words, the recapture, the money didn't get from the city or from the state to TIFFA?
Right, the city, the, the city had the money, they just had not made that transfer to the TIFFA.
Okay, do we know why that was, just?
Um, not for me to, to speak to, I don't really, I'm not sure what the circumstances were.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm going to look on page ten, we'll get the revenues and expenses. I'm going to, again, there are pie charts that'll break out some of the detail with this. Um, revenue did decrease from fifty-eight point seven million dollars down to forty-nine point five million dollars. Um, I will say in advance of the pie chart, biggest reason for that is that ARPA funding that was there in twenty twenty-three. So that was a big federal piece that just wasn't there the next year. Um, expenditures did go up, fifty-two million dollars up to fifty-four million dollars.
That is crazy.
And that led to a decrease in your fund balance of five million dollars, um, however.
Hold on, what page are you on?
I'm on page nine.
Okay.
One, one thing to keep in mind as well, though, is if you look at twenty twenty-three, the fund balance went up by six point six million dollars. So you've got kind of timing differences that are going on with various issues, and one year really can be kind of an artificial, you know, cutoff point. So looking at the two years together, the fund balance did increase. So not to, not to say that, you know, that's not something to be concerned with or to make sure that doesn't continue to happen, but not necessarily an issue, just because one year expenses exceed revenues.
Well, the reason why you're seeing the inflection, and we know this, I think you're the expert. It's not because we're just seeing the last two years and, you know, we're up. We saw, we saw ARPA funds. And, and that's what the truth is, like, I, we don't want, I, I don't want, like, and I'm not saying this to you specifically, but I don't want us to sugarcoat things. I don't want us to say things over the two years we're up, but the reality is we're down. Like, we have to be okay with standing with what is happening with the finances in the city. I don't want to hear things like, and, and I'm just speaking for myself, to say that, oh, you know, we're just, you know, we're up over the last two years, no, we're down, and we're gonna be down this year as well.
No, I'm not at all trying to sugarcoat anything, I am just pointing out that there was a surplus there the year.
I also want you to point out the, the, the things that, why we're really having this, this conversation today. Things that we need to be aware of, like, you're the expert that's auditing us right now. I don't only want to just hear the bells and whistles, I still want to hear the things that, that are disturbing, and it's okay, that's what this, this is all about, we can't just sugarcoat everything, and when things go bad, and be like, oh, well, and I kind of told you guys, we want to hear the truth. At least that's how I feel right now, I, I. Really, I think, and this, this here is one, you said it, we're delayed. And now we're hearing things like, oh, over two years, we're, we're kind of balanced out over here, we're up over the last two years. Yeah, we had ARPA funds. We know that, we, we use ARPA funding. The truth is, without ARPA funding, are we up? No, I can answer that for you, you don't have to, the truth is, we're not. And you shouldn't be afraid of who's telling you what you can and can't say from the administration, the truth is.
Nobody's telling you what I can and cannot say.
Okay, great, so are we up over those two years without ARPA funds?
I don't know the ARPA numbers off the top of my head, sir.
Ten million dollars?
Well, certainly.
Yeah, so without, without the ten million dollars, are we still up?
I'm, I'm not going to comment on something that I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Let's proceed. But, this, uh, council chair, I have a question, who's responsible for paying TIFFA back? Is it the controller or the treasurer?
Treasurer.
Treasurer? Are you invested the money?
They were.
Are we penalized for not paying TIFFA on time?
Thank you. Hey, page eleven, we've got some pie chart.
Sorry, before you, before you move on, uh, does other financing uses, what's that for?
Other financing uses, oh, let me open up to the report itself. That is just a, that was a transfer out to another fund within the city.
A what fund?
One moment.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. That would have been to the miscellaneous grants fund.
Miscellaneous grant fund. I mean, madam, madam comptroller, do we know anything about the miscellaneous grant fund? I have a question. What was your name again, I'm sorry, I know from Alan C. Young, but.
Jay, Jay Wild.
Jay Wild, this is from last year. Okay, this is the one we got last year. Is this from last year, but we're auditing last year's books, we're not auditing this year's book?
June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we usually get this before our, our study session.
Again, the, the report, I, I have never issued reports directly to, to council, the reports were provided to management, administration, filed with the state.
Yeah, I know, but then we usually get it in an email, Mariana. We usually get the reports in an email, and we review the reports. Today, it's sitting on our desk, and the only thing that we got was the PowerPoint presentation from them, we never received the report. And he just, I'm seeing the gentleman, Mr. Wild, is offering it for us today. Okay, is it a little, I, I only rece, I thought I only received this. We got this from the comptroller. What is it? I think we got this from the comptroller, and you said you had this in the backup?
I don't remember.
Yes?
Right now, we're starting a study session back, I don't want to publish on there.
Thank you. Sir, my question, the, when you do the audit, do you do like from January to January, or you do it from?
It's just for the year, so it's July first to June thirtieth.
Okay, so this is, so the basically, the one you're doing for the twenty twenty-four is from June till now?
The audit was for the year ended June thirtieth, so July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, has nothing to do from?
Nothing, nothing at all is covered, right? If there, if there were any significant subsequent events, they would be disclosed in the footnotes, but that wouldn't be referenced within the numbers within the body of the report.
Uh, councilman, well, uh, council, sorry about that. Mariana and, uh, or Chief Brogan, when did the new, the new contracts, the more generous contracts for police and fire, those hit the books two years ago, or more than two years ago?
I'm sorry, I did not pay attention to your question, but I have the answer to the miscellaneous grants, uh, uh, portion, so as you recall, last year, we were required to separate the MIDC grant fund for the courts, and they had to be moved out of the general fund into a specific separate fund, so that was what the remaining of the funds were at the time that we had to transfer into the new fund.
I'm sorry, say that again.
So there's a grant that we've had for years. It's for MIDC, the Michigan Indigent, um, Grant Fund that serves, uh, the courts to provide an attorney for any indigent individuals that may need one in the community. So we get a grant every year to provide this assistance. Um, as of last year, they created a policy where the grant needed to have its own separate fund outside of the general fund to be tracked that way independently.
Its own account, right?
It's its own account, so that was us moving that money into that separate account that got created in the budget last year. If, if you recall, we kind of talked about it a little bit when it got created.
Do you know if we go through this grant a hundred percent, do we use it all, or?
Which is it?
So the grant, uh, period is, I believe, October through September, and, uh, again, there's a little bit of a gap with our fiscal year and when the grant deadlines are, but yes, every year we go through all the money, and I believe, uh, we have actually received increases twice because we use more than has been allocated, which was also one of the findings in the audit, I believe, um, which you might, you might get to later.
Council chair? So councilman Watson. Um, Mariana, um, who, Mariana? Who, who, uh, specified that this money go into a separate account?
The, the, the grantees themselves, so.
The federal grants?
I don't recall, the MIDC, I think it's state, because it's Michigan, yes.
Council chair? Well, if they're.
Sorry.
Um, well, they're, they're doing a smart thing that we always want, we wanted things in separate accounts, but they say, the administration always say, no, it's in there, you can find it. See, the state's mandating that, that's what we, that's what we've been requesting on a lot of these things, like you do, like, especially like this, um, ARPA money that went into the main, went into the water main replacement. That should be a separate account, so we can track every penny of that.
So as you recall, uh, that's actually in a separate bank account altogether still, so that is separated.
It's a separated thing?
Yes.
It's a, it can't be touched for anything else?
Correct.
Okay, so can we, can we get, uh, monthly reports on that?
Well, you get monthly reports for me anyway, with the balances, but if you're wanting a breakdown of the statements, showing the expenditures, I can break that out for you as well. There hasn't been a lot of expenditures recently, that's why I'm down.
There's ten million or nine million in that, right?
Again, we haven't touched anything from the water portion. So the only money that was moved out of the ARPA fund was for the, um, revenue reimbursement portion, the ten million for that, which was approved by council both times.
Thank you. Councilman, uh, council. The more generous contract, the more money for police and fire amongst others, that hit two years ago? Hit the books or more than two years ago, or a year ago? Remember our former comptroller would speak about that? Our former personnel director?
Our former personnel director?
I don't remember the exact date that the fire signed their contract. The, the, the contract expired in twenty twenty-two, but we signed the deal in twenty twenty-four. I don't remember if it's spring or summer. And then the police contracts you're referring to were before ours, probably six months to a year before fire.
So that would have come in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, so that would have been, uh, if, if, are any idea how much responsibility the increase, uh, expenses?
Yeah, if, if you want to take a look, the pie chart on page twelve, you'll see public safety expenses increased from twenty-eight point eight million dollars up to thirty-two point eight million dollars, and that is primarily because of those increases.
Okay, thank you. Council Chair?
Yes, Sir, Councilman Watson.
Thank you.
You know, this audit is done on the fiscal year ending, um, June of twenty twenty-four, it's almost a year ago. And we're almost to a whole nother fiscal year, a few more months. I mean, why, what's the big delay? You, you mentioned something about a delay and you mentioned a couple.
And, and the delay was only about a month because December thirty-first is when the audit is due to the state. Um, so it would have been mid-December kind of in a best case scenario, so it was delayed by about a month. It was the beginning of February. So it was issued about six weeks ago, and tonight is when I was asked to come, you know, to the study session. So the timing really is not that off from what it typically would be. Because again, December thirty-first is when the report's been issued the last few years.
Well, that's, that's, that's the deadline. And you have to file a statute out there. I mean, that doesn't do us any good when we're looking back at almost two years back. We should, you know, how soon can you get an audit after the fiscal year is done?
Well, again, we, we have, there have been improvements in the two years we've done the audit. The first year, it was a scramble to have the report issued on New Year's Eve to meet the deadline. So things have gotten better each year. You know, certainly we are hopeful we can get this to early December or late November. But it's a matter of everybody coming together. We need to get the information, um, that we need for the audit. We need to be able to have the time to go through, do that, put the report together. Um, so, so realistically, um, you know, late November is probably a best case scenario going forward.
You mentioned, you know, Con, Con, Council Chair mentioned, you know, don't hide anything from us. Leave anything, leave anything behind that. I mean, what's the reason why you can't do an audit in like three months or four months? You know, just a couple of months, I mean.
No, there, there, there's time. You've got to close your books. You've got to put all, there's, there's a massive amount of documentation that has to be provided for an audit. You know, as you may well know, I mean, the audit report is virtually a hundred pages. There's all the internal information that has to be provided. You've got to have the actuarial valuations for your OPEB and for your pension. There's just a lot of moving pieces that have to come together. So I think if, and I don't know off the top of my head what the percentages are or where things lie, but I think it's very rare for any, you know, city your size or larger to be issuing a report in September. That would be very unusual. You know, maybe not all of them are going to the end of December. And again, we, you know, you've had, you know, a lot of things going on here over the few years since we've been involved. Things are, are getting better. We're moving forwards and ideally, you know, we don't want to be going up to, to the deadline either. So we'd like to move that up by, you know, a month or so at least. And, and that's kind of the target going forward and we'll just see what we're able, you know, to do with that.
Are there any suggestions that you could give us so we can speed this along a little bit? So we're not down to the deadline every year and asking for an extension? I mean, you're the expert.
The, the, the extension, again, that was a one-time fluke. That was a, that was a one-issue thing with the actuarial valuation from an outside third party. Otherwise, there would have been no need for an extension. You know, the report would have been issued by December as it was the first two years. So the, the extension was a total anomaly this year that would not anticipate, you know, seeing at all. You know, and again, it, it, it's a process. There's, there's a lot of information that's to be put together. Um, you know, your people have, you know, their day-to-day duties that also still have to be done. You know, they can't drop everything, you know, to prepare audit schedules and get ready for the audit. It, it's a balancing act. You know, and I, I really applaud the efforts that everybody at the city, you know, puts together, you know, to get here. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. But I think we've seen a lot of progress in the two years as well. And I certainly understand your concerns and the more timely you're able to get the report, you know, the better and more, you know, informational value it would have. I understand.
You are in a contract with us for next, next year?
No, as you, I'm sure, are aware, we were just renewed kind of late in the game for this year. So no, there is not a contract in place for us currently for next year. We certainly hope to be, but that is not in place as of today.
Well, maybe you can get the ball rolling a little bit sooner, you know, get ahold of them and say, hey, you know, let's get this.
No, wait, there, there is communication throughout the year. We deal regularly with Shannon, with Michelle from Plant Moran. So it's not just that we wait, sit back and wait until October and say, hopefully you can get us some stuff. I mean, there is discussion and every year there's hope that, you know, things can get tighter, you know, and get a, get a more improved timeframe.
Do you think that the, uh, the switching in the large amount of comptrollers we've had?
That certainly doesn't help. I mean, absolutely. Anytime there's, anytime there's transition and change, I mean, it takes, you know, time for that new person to get in place. And again, I want to give Shannon a lot of credit. She really has stepped in and has done an excellent job, in my opinion, was getting things rolling and stepping in without, you know, losing track whatsoever. So I, I really appreciate working with her. Um, you know, some of the other folks, I mean, you had somebody here who was just interim basis in and out real quickly. So it's things like that that really set you back because you, yeah, at best you tread water while you've got an interim person and then they walk away and all that is lost. You're starting from scratch again.
Shannon has been a huge asset.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah, she's been, she's been a rock star.
So again, there's certainly room for improvement with the timing. Um, I don't think it's quite as bad, not to, not to diminish what you're saying, but I don't think it's quite as bad as you, you may be thinking, but there's certainly room for improvement and we hope to get there.
March eighteenth, I mean, I think to me.
Well, again, this.
This is bad.
Understood, but the extension was a one-time anomaly. December is when we typically would be working, so you'd have a report in your hands before the new year.
Was there a penalty for that extension?
No, there was not. It was no extent, it's not even included as a, the finding for being late because the state granted the extension, so it is considered a timely filing.
Okay, can we finish, you want on?
Sure.
Right, start on page ten.
Okay, so I do just want to, um, one thing to look back on, on page ten, looking at your, your, your revenues and expenses. One thing I do want to point out, and, and this, you know, ties in to, you know, no desire to sugarcoat anything, and I just want to be clear, that's not at all my intent. I want to present factually what the numbers are. And one thing I do want to point out is, looking at your expenses from last year, fifty-four million dollars, um, your fund balance, although it was in excess of ten million dollars, whatever that number was, the, the unrestricted piece of that was a bit over four million dollars. So that's only about eight percent of your expenditures for the year. So, you know, are you out of money or broke? No. But is that something that makes budgetary controls very important and monitoring expenses very important? Absolutely. I mean, eight percent is not a significant amount. That, that's, in some ways, you could look at it as kind of a razor thin or very thin margin. So you've got a fund balances there, you've got an unrestricted piece, but you've got to rein in the spending and the expenses as best you can to avoid that perpetuating.
I, I, I'll, I'll say it for you. Eight percent is not safe. Eight percent is not safe, we, you know, and it's okay to say that. Because the reality is, everybody, including the administration and the chief of staff and comptroller's office and the police department and the fire department and the treasury office, clerk's office and the council, needs to be able to hear that. They need to be able to hear, guys, this is, we need to really tone it down. You can't just keep bringing up and saying, well, you guys approved it, you guys approved it. So when our auditor is standing before us, and I know I had this conversation with you guys about a year ago when I got on the call with, I believe, Mr. Alan C. Young. The truth is, we want to be able to hear those things. So then the next time something is brought before the council, everybody thinks two, three, four, five times, can we afford this? But because we're not hearing that, we're just pushing away from that fund balance. You saw what it was. We weren't at eight percent at one point. We were almost triple that number.
I am not sure what you're looking for from me because last year's presentation, the numbers would have been much higher because you had that funding that was there.
Correct.
So different situation then. And again, I, you know, am presenting that today. You got that eight percent of the unrestricted piece, so you, like, just, like,
to think that we're going to go into twenty twenty-five and almost be done with twenty twenty-five, I'm really like, scared to see what those numbers are gonna look like. Uh, Shannon, what's the fund balance today, do you know? This is from last year, isn't it? Right now, as of today? No, I'm asking, like, can you tell today what's the fund balance? Do you have a number? It should be a zero by the end of the year. So you don't know what the amount in the fund balance is as of today?
I know what it would be.
Well, you know that whole, all the checks that you have to file, the. Is that? Because I thought last time when I was in your office, you said you were up to date till January with the fund balance. You had a number. That the fund balance? Okay, let's continue, thank you.
And, and really, that is kind of the extent of the, the highlights. The other, the other thing I just did want to mention is with the findings that were reported, there were only two this year, and they were repeat items that are largely situational. One of them is the procurement policy, and there are some issues with the city charter and getting that fully in place. So that's kind of, uh, extraneous factors that are there. The other one is relating to cost allocations between funds. Um, and there has been, you know, an outside party that has been contracted that's being looked at and may well be rectified in fiscal twenty-five. Um, but otherwise, the internal controls and processes, um, are solid and in place. No deficiencies or weaknesses to report in any other internal controls.
I have a question. How does our, like, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this report from, uh, from June thirtieth. How is it that we come like, you know, we sign these contracts, we won't find a pension board, they say the city's healthy enough to go ahead and approve these contracts, but when the city's not, financially, I just don't see how the city can afford these contracts.
Yeah, that's not a question I can at all answer.
He's not. I know. But I mean, the scope of an audit too, it doesn't tell you how to spend your, your money, just basically, other than you're, are you doing? Yeah. So if you were to grade us today, you were to grade the city of urban highs at your expertise. How long have you been doing this for?
I've been doing this way longer than I like to think about.
I mean, just, I'd like to hear.
No, um, it has been, I see, I graduated from college in nineteen eighty-nine, so.
How long you been born?
Thirty-five years, wow.
Yep, so you did, you did, you've been doing this for about a year longer than I've been born.
Okay.
Right? And congratulations on, on your thirty-five.
Very, I appreciate that.
My question to you is, my question to you is, thirty-six years, you've seen a lot of municipalities, you've looked at a lot of books, and you've graded a lot. What would you grade us today?
Well, and, and that's a, that's kind of a loaded question and one that's so subjective. Um, I, I'm not one to kind of go to one extreme or another, so I'd probably say you're sitting at a C. So a lot of good things going on, um, but some areas to, to make sure to look at. So I think, again, things could be worse, but there's things, you know, to be improved. So, yeah, I certainly wouldn't look at you.
And, and that's not your role to, to determine how the way things operate, it's how we spend the money over here. Uh, uh, but the truth is, I, I thank you for that. I think you're very generous with that, C.
Well.
Yeah, I was gonna say C minus.
Okay, so we're, we're close.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any questions from the councilmen?
Council Chair?
Councilman, uh, so, but generally speaking, if you can say, so, like, sales tax revenues are up because of all the, uh, uh, property tax, property taxes are, are values of the property are way up. So we're still continuing.
Yeah, revenues were up, property taxes were up this year, so, so those items had a, they had a favorable trend, absolutely. The big, the big thing with revenue again was that ARPA funding, there was a one-time kick to the prior year that just, just wasn't there in twenty twenty-four or going forward.
We're, we're, a lot of economists predict we're overdue for more than a correction. So when that occurs, you know, probably occur in the next two years, the, the city's gonna have to, uh, probably dip into their fund balance a lot.
Well, certainly, with you, you and all cities, if there were to be a big downturn in property tax values, then yes, you're all gonna take a, take a big hit if that were to happen. Hopefully, that's not the case, but that is a contingency that you've got to contemplate, certainly.
Uh, uh, thank you. And yeah, I mean, in, in state shared revenue, the sales taxes, uh, gas tax, everything, they're all, it's, it's all way up.
Certainly.
Any other council members? Are you still going on this or did you finish?
I, I, I'm done.
Yeah, no, I said he was done. Uh, anyone from the administration? I know that there were some questions, Shannon, that were emailed to you by Councilman Ahmad from, uh, Mrs. LaPointe. Um, and we sent it over to you. Were you able to get any of those answers? I'm sorry, I can't read. Can you, will you be able to break those down to us? Unless you wanted to read them, some of the questions. Um, I mean, I don't know if some of them, if they have to do with the audit, but, uh, can we read them? Yeah, I mean, the first question was, uh, generally speaking, the corporate fund balance has skyrocketed over the last few years, yet the administration insists we have no money. Can the auditors provide any insight into why the balance is rising so much despite balanced budget? I think I can answer that question. It's the ARPA money. Yeah, uh, second question was regarding the results of the audit letter. First, it states that any misstatements were recorded as part of the audit. Where are, where are those recorded and has that been provided to council? It also mentions a management representation letter, uh, dated February third, twenty twenty-five. Is that letter included in the audit report? If not, was it provided separately to city council?
Yeah, but that is not part of the audit report and that, I'm sure that's something that could be provided to, to council, the representation letter, um, along with the other item you, you referenced.
And I believe you can get it on the state website. Management representation letter and, uh, yeah.
What's managed representation letter is kind of an internal document that we, any audit firm is required to get, basically, somebody taking ownership of what's in the statements and letting us know, hey, there's nothing that we are, you know, potentially concealing, essentially, yes.
Yeah, the third one, I'm not sure if you covered this, but it says, did any unauthorized expenditures come to the attention of the auditors?
No, there, there, there was not.
Do you, do you check on that too?
Yes, absolutely. We, we, we look at cash dispersments, we do certain testing to look at compliance with laws, regulations. So yes, and again, concept of reasonable assurance, we don't look at everything, but we do, we do test those items.
So how do you check on those? Like, if the administration say they spent money that we did not, okay, how do you check on that? He would know. He would just know that, you know. That's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, he said he, he did, but. No, so, so how they'll be able to track that is, if we had to pay the water and sewer fund and there was a receipt and it was broken down and then it was paid for, that would match to him. He doesn't know. Ah, so just with receipts and stuff, you match, so.
Sure. And then also look at budget to actual, so there is a budget to actual comparison that's included. If there are any overages that's in that, then that's potentially required to be reported as, as a non-compliance as well.
So yeah, basically, he does not cover that question on the unauthorized expenditures.
I, I think not from the, from the angle you're looking at. It's not really necessarily covered in the audit, correct?
Yeah. Council Chair? Number, let, let him finish it. Number four, where in the audit, including the past few years, would one look to track ARPA funds?
Well, and that would primarily just be the revenue that came in in past years and then that big unearned revenue piece that's sitting there. That is, if not a hundred percent, almost a hundred percent ARPA funding. So that big fourteen million dollar liability that's sitting there, just unearned revenue. It'll convert to revenue once it's spent.
In the auditor's professional opinion, who by title is responsible for implementing the correction needed for the identified deficiencies?
That's, that's your internal decision. That's somewhere between management, council, outside consultants. That different communities, different business all, all handle that, that differently and then share the responsibilities in different ways.
Uh, I didn't notice, notice any mention of the SRF loans we obtained. Where in the audit would these be mentioned and tracked?
Um, just no offhand, there are, there is a footnote discussing all the long-term liabilities.
I read it for thirty years, ten years, fifteen years.
Because, because the thing to keep in mind as well is the general fund doesn't, it's done under governmental accounting, so long-term liabilities and assets aren't contemplated at all. Um, that's included in the first set of statements, which is the entity-wide set of statements that includes all the long-term debt, the pension liability, the OPEB liability. So that's reflected there and there is a detailed footnote that lists out all of the different, um, liabilities and the terms and the maturities for those debts.
Uh, in regards to the needing the procurement procedures, but this be accomplished with an ordinance? Which specific charter section, uh, that's obviously, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilman Constance?
I'm all set, thank you.
Uh, anyone from the audience? And up? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street touch eleven. Are you speaking as a resident or as a treasurer?
Well, I could do treasurer or resident. Lisa Hicks Clayton, and I am the treasurer and also. And I am the treasurer and also a resident of Dearborn Heights. I live on Gully in Dearborn Heights. Um, the only question I have, and maybe our auditor can help me with this. State of Michigan requires financial policies for local government, and when I look through all these, um, because a lot of those I've written for the city, well, one that's included is the fund balance policy. And I know back when we had a budget and compliance director in the city, the city wrote one, and I believe the council had approved it. Um, and it's required by G A S B fifty-four. Do we have an update can compare it to what our fund balance pol- is right now compared to that policy? That's my question.
Uh, I, I don't recall offhand, um, what the fund balance policy is, if that exists. I, I don't really recall the specifics with that.
You know, I have a question too. So, any grants that the city obtains, is that an under-revenue or this is separate? Do you consider it just revenue or?
It would typically be revenue. Um, and again, if it's, if it's received unused, it could, could be included in the unearned revenue. But yes, that generally will flow through um revenue. And also, the, the handout was strictly representing the corporate fund, so there could be grant funds that are hitting other funds as well. So that's not necessarily an all-inclusive piece, but to facilitate conversation, since that's the, the primary, you know, most important of the funds for budgetary purposes, that's why concentrate the focus on.
Uh, the shadow light. Good evening, it's got a heart three five four Rosemary. I'm going to talk about the audit, but I have something else to speak about.
Let's think about the audit first.
Okay, uh, I believe the previous uh controller, we set the limit like sixteen percent of uh rainy fund. Where we at with that rainy fund? Today, how much do we have? We have eight percent, and we did reduce it to eight. Okay. Now, when you do the audit, do you look at the payroll? How much the people make and how much they really received?
Yes, we do.
You do. Did you notice anything that somebody got bonuses which was not authorized by the city council?
We, that's nothing that came to our attention.
Your attention. Uh, did you look at any receipts for payments under fifteen hundred dollars, if there is any backup for it?
To be honest with you, there, there may have been a few we looked at, but in general, we don't concentrate our testing on items of a very low nature. We certainly do look at some, but the testing is more predicated on larger dollar amounts.
Okay.
Not entirely, though.
You did give the city a great C.
Well, again, it's very subjective, I don't.
Subjective.
Just throwing something out.
Based, based on what, what observations be, because of our financial situation in this city.
Again, that's an impossible question to answer.
Okay.
I mean, just looking at the controls, the, the lack of deficiencies and weaknesses, the dollar of, I, there's room for improvement, but things aren't bad as they are in other communities, so.
Okay.
I just went with the middle-of-the-road spot. Nothing I can really quantify.
I thank you very much. And why was this audit late? It was supposed to be presented to city council in November.
No, that was never the intention for November.
But for the last twenty-some years, I attended the city council, it's always been submitted to that. And this, before the end of the year.
With, with, with all due respect, the last two years, um, the report was issued in late December, and I have presented, I believe, in March, both of the last two years. Maybe previously, but.
Was that, was that because some employees did not give you the necessary?
Absolutely not. As, as I, as I indicated, I just want to be very clear, we got complete cooperation throughout the process. The reason that it was February instead of December was strictly because of an actuarial valuation. There was an outside entity that we did not have to calculate the O P E B liability.
Okay.
That's the only piece that caused the, and there was an official extension that was granted, so it was issued about five weeks later than typically would have been.
I thank you for your work. I appreciate it. And city council for what you have done and the way I watched you for the last few years. I give you A plus plus for watching for our money.
Now, what's your second thing?
My second thing about the, the council. About what uh, Mariana said, about what I, what I talk about, about Zida Cook. Uh, it is amazing that she comes here and stand up and say things which are not true, and I don't want to be rude to say more than that. Uh, when we, uh, when we ask any company to come and do something in the city, we either we put out request for bid, or we receive from that person proposal. There wasn't any proposal. There wasn't any document of the attendees of that meeting. We don't know what that was for. We have no idea where it took place. And she said, we gave Mr. Abha what the, what was exist. I foiaed all that document. They refused to give any information about what, what was the training, the name of the employees who took training. Any qualification that women had to, to teach people in our city who are carrying master's degree, some of them. We don't know anything about that secret meeting except she split an invoice which came two thousand two hundred fifty. Then they split it into two, so they do not come in front of you. And she never asked for down payment because she submitted two thousand two hundred fifty. And the treasurer refused to sign the check. Then they went and changed into two checks. They are the same date, three seventeen, twenty twenty-three. It was the same day submitted, the same thing for the same two hours of training. So we paid somebody eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour to give us training for people in the city. She has no authority to sign it. She has no authority. I don't know if she was even uh present in that meeting. I don't know if she knows anything about that training. So, I hope she stopped lying, because that was a lie and that was a forgery. And you should follow up on it, because she should be fired like everybody else. Thank you.
Mariana? Sue me. Go sue me. I, I just have, I just have a question. I'm not gonna ask you, I'm just gonna ask you about the logistics, nothing. Please, nothing from the audience. Please. Yeah, is there a reason why the bill is split into two?
I explained it at the last council meeting. I'm no longer gonna talk about this topic.
I know, I think you're talking, what you talked about at the last city council meeting was.
This particular question.
Hang on one second. No, what we talked about the last meeting was, it was a meeting that was done for two different groups and there was.
No, it was one group.
Okay.
I explained it at the last meeting, but again, sue me if you must. I have every right to have done that. As a chief of staff, I have the right to sign on multiple documents that I have signed for the city. So, again, he continues to say that you wouldn't have a position in a leadership position with the salary that I have if they're not authorized to pay. I explained, the only reason it was paid from the mayor's department is because the H R department didn't have a budget that particular year, so it came from the mayor's office. Um, again, if you have any issues with regards to that, you can come and talk to me um, in private. I'd be happy to explain to you and explain everything that took place. And um, and that's, that's my response.
So the truth is, uh, the, the conversation when it comes to taxpayers, one, it doesn't have to be talked in a private room. It can be talked public.
Correct, and I can, I explained that at the last meeting.
You have to refrain from saying, if you want to talk to me about something, you know, if a resident gets up and says, hey, well, I was just split into two, because really, if it wasn't split into two, you'd have to come before the council, and it didn't come before the council. And we know, we know that you could sign things, you can't sign things over fifteen hundred dollars, because that's what the charter says.
Correct, but I also didn't want to pay something prior to the event taking place. So then they explained, we need to purchase materials for the event. Thus, this, this budget was split, which is what I explained at the last meeting. Who was in attendance? Again, all of the directors, all the leadership training team was there. It is not an unusual thing to have. Every single director was involved. So, yes. You're not a director, Lisa, I'm sorry, you're an elected official.
Who's Lisa?
Yeah, again, elected officials weren't included, directors were.
George, were you there? Thank you. Council chair, that's Mariana. When was the down payment paid?
I don't recall the dates. Um, again, I, it was really fast, like, it did happen rather suddenly, which is probably also why it wasn't presented to council in a timely manner, but it did come through claims and it was approved, so it was not like hidden or anything of the sort. Um, so, as, as far as I recall. Um, again, we, we can look into that deeper, but again, every department was there. Uh, it was, it took place at the Zida Cook location, um, which accommodated all of the employees that were there for the situation. There was Zida Cook there, as well as one of her employees that was assisting in the event. And um, again, we worked through a lot of leadership development, communication issues, um, how to address concerns from residents, et cetera. And um, again, I don't have any documents. Again, like, there weren't necessarily any handouts that were given. It was a team-building opportunity. And um, that's why the FOIA didn't produce documents, because there weren't any documents to be given.
Thank you.
And again, typically, trainings don't provide documents to people to take home, or if they do, they're also restricted, so adding that in general for other trainings as well.
Were there, were there two separate claims that, for the down payment and the, the?
I think from the audience.
The one was for the products that she needed to purchase for the event before we went. And the other one was for the total payment of, like, the complete payment of it, which is why there were two of them.
Guys. Please, yes.
I don't have the list, so she's the one who bought it. Um, I can ask her to recall what the expenses were. We, we paid for the experience. Sorry, we paid for the experience and the training that she provided, which again, typically, it's, it's more of a verbal thing. So you pay by the hour to trainers, and it is normal for a group of ten people to pay a hundred and fifty dollars per participant. So that is not an unusual charge.
You know, I will tell you.
Yeah.
If I asked every single director to pay the hundred and fifty dollars, they probably would have said, I'm out.
Correct, which is why the city and the organization typically provides all trainings for all employees, because they would all say no if they had to pay the trainings.
You know, I, I think this is, I think what here the council members are doing, and maybe the residents, show that the stuff's just gotta stop. Our desk is just behaving. We, we know, we know these were split up. If she purchased the things, or, or the company of Zida Cook's purchased this stuff, and this is the ultimate pricing from Zida Cook. If it's greater than fifteen hundred dollars, according to the, to the charter of nineteen sixty-three, you come before this governing body. That's it.
Again, it was my understanding that claims came through council. I can double-check if those did or not.
They didn't.
Okay.
And nothing was done to split it up to evade the, yeah. It, it, it came up as, as an expense of under fifteen hundred twice to make it up. And this isn't, has nothing to do with Zida Cook, it has nothing to do with the company. I think this ultimately has to do with the relationship between the administration and this governing body of, of the council saying, please. We witnessed this with the tree company that, that chopped down an emergency of trees right up, uh, behind, behind, uh, uh, the, the restaurant. Uh, we, we, we've seen this many times. We've seen this with I B Electric. We've seen this with here. I don't, I, if you don't realize the trend is the council saying, stop it. Why? We, we have our auditor here telling us, we suck.
Yes, and actually, I, I want to go back to one of the items that he mentioned and an email that I followed up with council at the last meeting. So again, I think that a lot of this miscommunication that continues to take place in the organization and it's repetitive, it's because of our procurement policy. So I truly believe that that needs to be updated. I showed you the discrepancies in between the amount that's allowed by the charter and the amount that's allowed in the policies and procedures. If we follow the policies and procedures manual, you would have received those claims. Not as claims, but you would have received them in your monthly report of like, this is what's been paid out. Why that's not being done, that is a perhaps area that we can update, and I know that Shannon already came up with a process. I don't know if she's implemented it already, where they're showing you, here are all the things that were paid, even if they are ten dollars. Um, so that is, in my opinion, what's gonna be clearer for you, is to have a full breakdown of every single penny that the city is spending, which is what you should be having. You should only ask for permission for a certain amount, but you should still view everything.
I'd like to.
Thank you.
So, and, and with regards to who's responsible, that you asked, like, is it the administration or is it the council? It's a combination for the procurement policy, because you have to set what the limits are by the charter, and you do need to do an ordinance amendment for that. And then the internal processes of how things take place, more of the administration. I gave you the samples from M G F O A and from M M L, in particular, our contractual uh partners at Plant Moran have recommended the Traverse City policy. So if that's something that you want to proceed, all of you have access to that. I gave it to you at the last council meeting. You're more than welcome to, to, again, have a conversation, have a study session on which one you would like to proceed with.
Thank you.
We had proposed that back in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, and it went nowhere. It was denied every time it was presented to council. So it, it kind of just fell through the cracks, but I definitely recommend that that gets brought up again.
Thank you. So, Chair, while she's still up there, Mariana, you said the, the.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, the procurement policies were presented to city council, we refused them.
Correct. They were prepared at the time in collaboration with the treasurer's department, the comptroller's department, the uh, compliance director and Mr. Keri Miyaki. And we presented them to council twice, and they were denied both times. So again, I definitely think it's, it's time to bring them back up, because it continues to be an issue.
What you, what, what form was it presented to us as? I mean, was it said, this is a procurement policy, we're gonna have policies, how we spend our money, how money's approved?
It, it was a motion that clarified what the concerns were and what the issues that we had, so it was a letter from Mr. Miyaki that explained what the concerns are, what the issues are, and then it was a motion that broke down the sections that needed to be revised, or that were most critical to be revised. At this point, I personally believe that that was too weak, and I think that you should just revamp the policy as a whole, which is that larger document that I share, shared, which is what's being recommended by Plant Moran.
Would that be an ordinance or what would that be?
So again, it has to be both. So you have to, in the ordinance, set what the legally allowed amount for the administration to utilize is for the different types of procurement. So, it can be five thousand dollars for you to get written quotes, ten thousand dollars for you to go out for a public bid. Um, twenty-five thousand dollars for you to, I don't know, be more strict, get approval from council before, like, I don't know. There is various categories. There's a table in every single one of the samples that were given to you, so you need to set those amounts. And once those amounts are set, the policies and procedures will follow with that.
Uh, Councilor, if I may, uh, George, if you could find that for us and send it to us, but if I recall, why that was denied was because the amounts were a lot larger than what they originally, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, and that's why it, it was, it was voted down. It wasn't voted down because we said, no, we don't want to see, be transparent. It was voted down, and I remember this, because we were upping everybody's, like, everybody's some extra money. And we said, hold on, like, we know the finances of our city. We can't afford to be able to just start giving away five thousand to this department, three thousand for this, twenty-five thousand. I remember this conversation, and that's why it was brought down. It wasn't brought down because you guys said, we want to spend ten dollars and be transparent, show you how we spent ten dollars. See, that's what you're presenting to us right now, but the reality is, what was presented to us two years ago, it was Councilman Mothcann, myself and a couple of individuals, it, it was giving an increase. It was an increase to the Parks and Recreation Director, it was an increase in, 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 in their actual spending to the procurement, yes.
Okay, so, I literally sent this to you last week, so you don't have to look for it very closely. The limits were still within the fifteen hundred in the original motion that we presented. Did we have the conversation about increasing the, the amount? One hundred percent. We are still gonna have that conversation. We are still going to propose to be in compliance with what other communities are doing and what the state is doing and following those guidelines, because the fifteen hundred dollar limit, in all honesty, it is an outdated number. I get it, it's up to the council to decide that, but again, the administration and the recommendations are always gonna follow what's in compliance currently in other communities. It's up to you to set the amounts. Again, like, you get to set the amounts, one hundred percent. Um, but we are always going to present what other communities are doing and what is the best practice for their organization.
Thank you. So, Chair?
Yes, I, I think we, not only the amount should be set, but uh, who can actually sign checks and stuff in that situation? Um, Mr. Wild.
Council, can you lift your mic up?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wild recommended, his recommendation said the city should, should adopt its own documented procurement procedures as required by who?
Is this required by, is it a law that we do that at one ninety-six?
Yeah, I I don't have the document in front of me, but but certainly there are requirements that you have, you know, procurement policy in in place. So it says, Mariana was discussing, it's just a matter of taking a very good opportunity with this being updated to look at those dollar thresholds and and seeing if those should be, you know, increased to be more in line with other communities.
What's, what do you, what do you, uh, stating there, so C C F R two hundred point?
That's a, that's a, that's a federal clause.
Federal.
Federal requirement, yes.
Federal requirement?
Yes.
We're not following, we don't have a federal, following a federal requirement.
You you certainly don't have really a procurement policy that is being followed, that's in line with both the charter and with the policies and procedures. So you've got kind of a nebulous kind of going in different directions.
Is there a template provided?
I think, as Mariana said, I think you've got several templates that have been provided, you know, for council to to look at.
Right now, we're just following, based on what the charter says, going based on, we don't have an actual requirement, um, uh, uh, broken down yet.
It's a federal requirement, though.
It is. There's been a fire requirement for many years.
And that's why it's been shown as a binding for for at least three years we've done the audit.
Thank you. Any top, any anything else, councilman?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Rachel Lapointe. I'm a microphoneist.
Hi, guys, we're Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights.
One second, second, Rachel. Rachel, one second. I'm done. Okay, whatever it is, now it went away. Uh, go ahead, Rachel, sorry, please state your name, the city, the street that you live on, you got two minutes. Three minutes.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, so I would just say right now, I am in agreement with Mariana that you guys desperately need to look at the ordinances for, uh, the various, you know, budget number stuff, sorry, I'm sick, so my brain is half working right now, um, which is why I'm not there tonight, um, but I would be totally in agree with, agreement with her and I would actually ask, um, if she could forward me some of that stuff that she sent you guys about the stuff that happened in twenty twenty-two, I don't recall that, I would really appreciate it or make that public, it would be great, um. And then I just wanted to thank the auditors for being there, I know they kind of get stuck in the middle on some of this and they're doing a great job and I can tell that, uh, they did what was asked of them by council in the contract. And if you guys want a more detailed audit, then we need to look into getting a forensic audit. And that's all, have a good night, guys.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the audience?
Trappowski Columbia Street, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Zoom, okay, um, just curious, you know, we spent three point two million dollars on golf course equipment that was bought and signed for by Miss Mariana, correct?
What is it?
The golf course equipment.
What about it?
Three point two million dollars worth.
I mean.
It was bought, it was bought and signed for by Miss Mariana, but my question is, is who checked it in and is it there? Who signed for it?
Mariana, did you sign the three point two million dollars?
I don't recall if I was the final person signing it, but that did come to council with the list of the itemized items that came through and Mr. Jason Pearson is currently the one that is using the equipment, we purchased it for him to manage the golf course. Uh, I would have to look back at the invoices, but that did come to council at the time, the full list was there, it was presented by Mr. Pearson. Again, I don't recall who signed, but council approved it, so regardless, there was approval from the council body.
Thank you, can we find out, you can send us that, uh, George? No. Um, I know all the assets, like furniture and stuff and all the buildings, they they got a little seal on them, desks and stuff, I think they have like some kind of scanner or something on them, where you can, when you buy something, uh, purchased, it comes in an office.
She, we don't have that system, we have it for technology now, but not necessarily for all of the equipments in the city.
Because, but I know, we know how many desks we have and how many chairs we have, you know, so we don't even know how much uh, golf course equipment we have.
So we do, so the golf course equipment, there is a list and it is also all insured with the, um, M M R A insurance, it was added onto the insurance when it was purchased because any type of machinery has to be added to that.
Is there a breakdown in the insurance policy for every piece of equipment?
The ones that are over fifty thousand.
The, the, I, the, are there any over fifty thousand? We have some golf course equipment that's over fifty thousand.
Sorry, I'm confusing things, um, buildings that are over fifty thousand or structures that are over fifty thousand are there and then like all the vehicles and like, um, trucks, et cetera, they're also listed in there. You're about to see the M M R A insurance renewal shortly, I can send you the one from last year, which has what we presented last year. Right now, we're actually reviewing those, um, items with the directors to see if any changes happened.
We're maintaining the equipment, I know that was in the contract, that we would purchase the equipment and maintain it. So it's fine, that, that was approved by the city council. Um, how do we know, you know, is there, are are we getting bills for maintenance on these?
I do not believe that we are getting bills for it, I don't recall if it said that we were gonna maintain the equipment itself. Um, I know that it said that we were going to purchase it and if it breaks, then we would be responsible for replacement. Um, but it is currently being maintained by the staff at the golf course that understand how to use the equipment or are trained on it.
And I talked to Jason, he said that, I don't know how to quote him, but he said, Vanessa said he was paying for some of the maintenance on there, which is not fair in the contract, we should be paying for the maintenance on these things.
I don't think that's on the contract, but we can take a look at that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, like Vince said, you know, we have equipment and we spent, I don't know how much, I don't think it was three million, I think that was part of a package deal.
I think it was like, nine maybe.
I think it was like seven fifty, so yeah, very close.
Yeah, I think the, the highest thing we had was like the cut, the cut the grass is like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And they were used equipment, I remember, uh.
Yeah, you got some good deals.
Yes, he did.
But I mean, it's, that's an inventory, we have in, uh, DPW yard, we have boughs, dump trucks and everything, and we have those inven- inventory, don't we, somewhere?
Again, we have everything inventoried like in a list, but we don't have the tags that you're referring to.
Oh, yeah, okay, good about the tags, I guess we don't have those, but we do have all the equipment, the golf course, all the equipment from DPW, all the, all the police cars, everything inventory somewhere.
The directors should be responsible for each of their department's, um, list of items, correct?
Department does the golf course fall under?
It falls under DPW slash Parks and Recreation, but the mayor oversees the payments of the contract.
That sounds funny.
It it was like that since we took it on from the county, so that that was who the department responsible for it was.
Well, what does Parks and Recreation do?
They host events, typically when we have a banquet and different things like that, they host events at the golf course.
It shouldn't be under DPW, honestly, why it'd be under DPW? There is a reason why it's under DPW and?
Uh, DPW has to do some of the maintenance in it with regards to like the area that is our responsibility, such as the parking lot.
Where you made us in every city building.
Correct.
Every department. I guess I wanna move on to the next thing here, thank you, councilman, are you all set here?
I guess so.
Thank you. Uh, the audience here. Thank you, Mariana.
Hello, everybody, good afternoon.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Salaam alaikum, my name is Jamil Alawiyah, I live in Dearborn Heights, uh.
And your street?
Baldwin Street.
Yeah.
Uh, so I wanted to discuss, uh, something that came in the mill to me and a few other residents. This water bill, it's double since my last payment and I haven't used it as mu- as double, um, it's same as I've been using it. And, uh, I'm scared for when summer and spring hit and I'm gonna be outside playing in the pool and with the water I might have to take out a, a loan to pay it off, so, uh, I wanted to ask, I mean, is this normal, um? Why is everybody getting hit with double the water bill?
A great question, um, things are being looked into, but Shannon is here, if you can speak to Shannon, she can look into it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's a form that you're gonna fill out, but Shannon, can we also take a look at his water bill for him as well? Um, you know, this is something that has been ongoing and it's no secret in Dearborn Heights, we're not sugarcoating any of it. Um, and it's really affecting people's livelihood. My parents, my dad's in Lebanon right now, my mother's in in the house by herself, her and my little brother. And I wanna say they got an eight hundred dollar water bill.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Two people.
So do we, do we pay half of it or do we pay all of it or?
So that's why I want you to see our comptroller, she oversees the water.
Is this, is is yours actual or, I said, is it actual reading?
Is there an E or an A next to it?
Where would it say it?
Next to the unit.
It says A.
What about the previous one?
Type A.
What about the previous one, it says on it?
Type A, they were all type A.
All A, even the previous bill?
Yeah, two bills, type A, oh, 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 my last one?
No, no, it says on it too, like, it says previous bill, which, which next to it, A or E.
A.
A?
Yeah.
They're both actual.
How many billing cycles is your bill, does it say?
Three, three months.
Okay, how much is your bill?
It's six hundred four dollars.
Not bad.
Not bad, the last one, last one's three hundred.
Not bad.
So it's doubled. So I'm scared when, when, when the, when, you know, summer, spring hit and we're gonna be playing outside and.
Watering the grass.
Watering the grass, turn on the sprinklers.
A blood's gonna be high if water can be watered. Council Chair? Yeah. But you know, Council Chair, thank you, um, you know, our employees in the water department, I don't think they're, you know, I know they're not, uh, jacking up anybody's bills, they're getting information from some source to charge you to put on these bills. What, I I think, you know, I mean, the 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 people in the water department, they just don't say, hey, let's jack up, you know, a hundred bucks on this one.
I don't think that's what anybody said, bro.
No, I'm sa- I'm saying they don't, so somewhere, that amount of money is getting raised, increased somehow either through the meters, some, I think we should hire somebody just to come in, an outside source, you know, see if someone would do it for like five hundred ba- dollars, go into the water department and just hang out there, go, give them access to everything they need and have them look, look, look into it.
What are you gonna, what's the chair?
That's gonna help us. Yeah, guys.
Council Chair?
Well, I I know someone that'll do it, very reliable person already.
Really? Council Chair, to.
She was, yeah.
To Mr. Winstall's, uh, comments, I asked at the last meeting that we have a full review of the water department. A full review from the top to the bottom, the management, all the way down to the person that answers the phone. It needs a full review because what residents are going through, and I'll say this again, is unacceptable. And the way the residents are treated when they come in complaining about their water bills is unacceptable. And the answers they're getting about their water bills is unacceptable. And the way employees treat residents in the city about their water bills is unacceptable. If they're not happy in their position working for the city, get the hell out. To be honest with you, I don't care if they're a union worker or whatever they are. That's the way I'm gonna say it, because to be honest with you, there's some people I know out there, it's between them paying their water bill or their home's gonna go to taxes. It's unacceptable, and then we're gonna sit here and say, well, employees are are understaffed and stressed out like I got, like I'm saying. If you're not happy with your job at the city of Dearborn Heights, get the hell out, and I'm gonna say this bluntly to everybody because at the end of the day, the residents pay your checks and people forget that.
So I I wanna.
And Council Chair, I'm not done.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. Every time a resident comes into city hall about their water bill, and I'll say this at every meeting forward, you have a water leak, your toilet leaks. That's exactly what they're telling over twenty thousand residents. Are we, are 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 we in the Guinness Book of Records for little leaking toilets in the city? And it's not, it's really not, there's some people, my water bill, my water bill personally, sometimes it's twelve, thirteen hundred dollars.
Guys, nothing from the audience.
And 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 that's fine, we have a bond, everything to it, but the fact that residents can't get answers when they come in, especially elderly people coming in, people that really have no knowledge about what the water bill breakdown is, that's unacceptable.
Guys, I don't think it's the employees.
No, hold on, it starts, it starts at leadership and it goes down, they're used to the same status quo. The same exact excuse has been used year after year after year. I promise you, if we put a complaint box in front of the water department with the residents that are dealing with issues, that box will be full within an hour of complaints.
I agree.
And I'm 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 gonna put it at the next meeting, I really wanna put forward a motion, I want the water department and the city audited. I'm gonna see if certain positions are needed and certain not, it might be better to go to a third party where there's nobody like, Councilman Winstall's saying, nobody's doing or not their job or their job, we're going to electronic meters. But honestly, if we're rating the city as C, our water department is getting enough.
Thank you.
And I'm not saying for the guys that are out there digging the ground, I'm saying that the, that the people that are dealing, that the employees that are dealing with residents every single day, and it's unacceptable.
Just hang on one second, I I do just wanna say, I I wholeheartedly agree on certain things, but you have to remember, guys, being inside the water department and the staff that's in the water department, it's not easy getting screamed and yelled at, because they're getting screamed and yelled at, let's not take that away from them. They're, they're being, why is my water bill this high, I was there. You 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 know, I was there, why the hell is this up so high, screaming and yelling. Like I said to the gentleman, like, hey, that's no way to speak to anybody. Granite, I heard, well, you must have a water leak or a herd, it went through your water consumption and it was, that's why it's there. That's not the answer, but I don't think the employees that are clerical employees that are sitting in front of the front desk know the reason to, so the really they should say, I don't know.
Correct.
They should say, I don't know.
Correct.
And I think that's what you want, what you want.
What it is, is that the resident goes in, they deflect from helping the resident, that's what it is.
Yeah.
I personally called the water department and just falsely complained that I had a high water bill, the answer I got was, the toilets must be leaking. Because you know how many calls we get a day about water bills and emails?
Good, good.
And and certain employees wanna go on social media and post statistics that they have ninety percent of ten dollar fix. I don't know, everybody's an expert in the water department, they're all plumbers.
All right, guys, let's, let's, not, no, let's not get on the topic of that. Um, Council Chair, hang on one second, let let Councilman, Councilman go next.
Just to dovetail on what Councilman Sob said, this is very much correct, it's not always gonna be leaked, but people should, number one, check if it's an actual reading or an estimated reading. Number two, check and see what period it's for, for several months, and three, check for a leak. Just because you're gonna, you're gonna be asked that, they're gonna, they have a handout at the, uh, water department saying, here's how to check for leaks. But to do all those things, and we 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 just heard a young lady came to the meeting, uh, the Great Lakes Water Authority, when they regionalized the system, uh, and took it away from the city, the trade, water rates were supposed to go down, they haven't gone down, they've gone up, it's up and up and up. And, um, uh, uh, they just increased our water rates again. So it's, it's, it's something the council chair had previously said, and I know we're all interested and we're going to look into further.
Thank you. I I I wanna just say, I know that I've been really very adamant about the investigation on it, and I just wanna pull this up. I've reached out to Mr. Bill Wolfson and I'm hoping that we can have, we're gonna have two, I wanna call them town halls, you are gonna be able to hear the residents' complaints, but there's gonna be two workshops. One that's gonna take place on the south end, one that's gonna take place on the north end. Or I don't even wanna say north and south, I wanna say forty-one two five and forty-one two seven, but Dearborn Heights is gonna be overlooked. The dates that I have here, and I'm just waiting on confirmation, are gonna be April twenty-third and April twenty-fourth. I was gonna announce it at the next city council meeting, once I have it official documented in writing, uh, from Mr. Wolf and his team, Wolfson. Um, the truth is, all this data is gonna be put together, but what's going on with these water bills? But I also like to see, just from things that I've been observing here, and Mr. Alaway, I want you to know this, Jamil, that a lot of people have received estimated bills for X amount of years. Legit, from two thousand and nineteen, I'm not saying years is that far back, from two thousand, years could have been from a year ago. And they probably, you know, short billed you for five, six, seven, you know, months of, and you know, shorted you an extra twenty, thirty, forty dollars every single month for those, save for that last year or two. And so what they did was, when they did an actuary, they said, oh my God, we under budgeted this. Say for that last year or two. And so what they did was when they did an actuary, they said, oh my God, we under budgeted this, this one resident. We're gonna hit you with this one bill to kind of catch you up, to bring you back to place. Now, I'm not saying that that's what happened, and you wouldn't see it on the detailed list because it doesn't say that. You don't get a breakdown, hey, we, 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 we under billed you for the last two years, now we're billing you because fortunately, there's not a breakdown of that. You'd have to call it, then when you go see the building, water department, they're gonna tell you kind of Councilman Sob said, there must be something wrong. You were, you did use that water. You're right. Why am I being billed for it now? So I want you to see Shannon, and I wanna know if that could have been one of the reasons. Or maybe there is a leak, or you know what? Maybe there's something wrong with your water meter.
Council Chair.
But if it is something wrong with your water meter, hang on one second, Councilman. If something is wrong with your meter, city will charge you a fee of two hundred dollars to get it tested. And I think the last two people that I've known that got theirs tested saw that there was an issue.
Counsel.
Yeah.
So I just wanna.
Before, before you go on, I, Councilman, what, go next.
Yeah, thank you. You know, what, what G L W A charges us is one thing. I think they charge everyone the same amount.
No, they don't.
They don't.
They do not.
The one, the one, regardless, it's, it's after what they charge us and what we charge our residents. We charge our residents the highest per, per unit price of like anyone in Michigan probably.
Country.
And I, and, and I wanna know why that is. And we actually have a, a major surplus in our water fund. It's how much? Over twelve million dollars. I was twenty, I, I thought it was about twenty-two, but anyway, twelve million, that's a lot. That's a surplus and our, from our, our, our residents getting. You know, increases after increases. I vote no on every water increase. And uh, so um. The thing is, is uh, oh gosh, that's, um, we can't, you know, we can't charge our residents so much. More per unit than everyone else and have this surplus. And now there's rumor that the, the, the administration wants to take some of that money from the water fund. And put it into something else, I understand, and that, that can't happen.
Restrictive.
I know, but I've heard rumors about they're trying to do something like that. I don't know if the president wanna speak on that. Do you know anything about that?
Oh, the uh, the administration asking to take some money out of the water fund? If you are gonna talk about that, I would like you to go up to the mic. If you don't feel comfortable talking about it, you don't have to.
Okay, all right, all right, thank, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, that's, that's residents' money. It shouldn't be a secret. This is, you know. I will, I will, I'll send her official question on it. Yeah. Thank you. So please take care of that. We're still on public comments. I'm, I'm gonna hear from Zoom and I'll come back to you, Vince. I'll give you a quick thirty seconds, but. We're gonna go to Margaret King next. Guys, this is a study session on, on our, actually, on the. On our audit.
Hi, guys. Margaret King, Merrick Street.
We miss you, Margaret.
I miss you guys. Um. On the financial part of the year, have we known anything about Joey's initiative with doing the school safety? Where does that stand? Is that in the budget? Do we still have that money, Mo, that you allocated?
Uh, so that's a great question. This is, uh, with the audit, would tell us just like where we're standing. This isn't about like the actual budget. I know I've asked Mister D. It was supposed to be done with Chief Hart. I don't know where, where any of that is now. Um, but what I can tell you is there was, it was a million dollars uh for the Joyce Smith Initiative, hoping for speed bumps around schools. Enhancing, you know, some lighting, um, and really giving like some structural things like schools, a school zone. Like you see in Ann Arbor and different schools, but we don't see that here in Dearborn Heights. No, I don't know where they're at with that. Ask Mister D. Like we're still kicking the can down the road.
Just to, Councilman Winston, I think the C S O projects are, are, they are added to the water bills, correct? From the bond that we pulled, the city pulled, we're paying for the C S O's project through the water bill. That's why the bills are so high too. Just to say, I saw, I'm not sure about any other projects too, yeah.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Margaret. There's, we have uh Tim Emery here. Margaret, are you all done? You and you her real quick. Margaret, were you all?
Yeah, I'm all set. Just wanted to know where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you for watching. Tim Emery.
Yeah.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good, good, good. I, when they were talking about when they painted the crosswalks and everything, why wasn't Annapolis and Beach Daily done?
Why was what?
Annapolis and Beach Daily.
I don't, I don't know that answer. You know, we need to send it to Mister D. Uh, Mister D will have to look into that.
Okay.
And this is the first I hear about it. Is that the only intersection that he knows of? Council Chair? Is that, is that the only, only uh intersection that you're aware of, Tim?
Well, it wasn't done at uh, uh, Penn and Beach Daily either, so.
Where?
Penn and Beach Daily.
Okay, I'll, I'll swing by there and I'll, I'll check it out. Can you send us an email with those intersections, if you don't mind?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Vince, I'm gonna give you a quick thirty seconds.
Give me a minute, I gotta suck some air.
Give you, we didn't thirty, no.
Trappowski Columbia Street again. Um, recently, the people were out to replace our water meter at our house. And striking up conversation with the gentleman re- replacing the meter. He had stated that he is running across a lot of damaged wiring from the meter to the uh. Unit on the outside of the house. A lot of corrosion, a lot of broken wires. So. I'm not saying that that's exactly the cure or the answer that people are looking for, but this is some of the issues that he's ran across that I discussed with him. Just out of curiosity, because, you know, I said, hey, you know, can I get a picture of the meter before you put it in and? The meter that you're taking out just for the numbers, um, just in case I needed them. But that was brought up in the conversation. Um, now, when you do get your meter, you get a brand new meter, obviously, and you're gonna get a larger box on the outside of your home. To replace the small little meter reading box that they've, that are currently there, in case anybody's wondering.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation this evening.
I've had complaints from people that they're told they have to get a plumber first and they have to pay for that, which isn't good.
Thank you. And I agree with you. That's not good.
Council Chair, head of Congress.
Is this on the water?
Yes.
Can we save water? Because this is a study session on the, and, and, yeah, on the budget, not on the budget, but our.
And you have the water department?
Well, that's, that's, that's why, that's why, I just wanna see if you have any closing remarks for now.
No, I, I, I do not. Um, just wanna thank you all for the, I think, the, the useful discussion and the back and forth, and I think it's uh. Just valuable to be able to discuss these things, so appreciate.
Do you guys, do you guys audit water departments?
You know, that, that sounds like kind of a specialized thing that you're looking for. So, you know, certainly we, we could talk with you. I don't know if we would necessarily be the. You know, the, the, the best party, depending on what you're looking for, but certainly something we could potentially help you with.
What if we collected all the data for you? Every single person has some type of issue and we brought it to you? Would you be able to, and I'm serious.
Uh, that, that is potentially something that, that, that we could look at, seeing if we could come up with some procedures that we could.
We're about to renew a contract with you, right?
We're, we're, we're happy to help you in any way we can.
We'll take a pro bono. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Any, any other Councilman? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you and have a great day.
That's only a study session.